On the August 24th, 2020, Wilson County Commissioners Court is now in session. We'll have the opening prayer by Thomas Bonham, Associate Pastor of the Fourth Church of Christ.
You all go with me in prayer. Our most gracious, loving Heavenly Father, we praise your holy name. We thank you for this day and the many blessings you have given us, each and every day. Father, help us to always remember that all things come from your mighty hand of creation. Fathers, this meeting in Wilson County Commissioners Court comes to order. We thank you for our elected servants. Judge Jackson, our Commissioners Gomez, Wild, AJ, and Wiley. Watch over them and all those who support them in their work. Keep them safe from harm as they hold these positions of honor among the people of this county. Father, grant this court wisdom and unity as they represent the citizens of this county as their decisions this day will serve in the best interest of those citizens. Fathers, each of us tries to serve one another in the best of our abilities. Grant us peace and love through our days of service. In the end, eternal life with you in heavenly goodness. Father, this is our earnest prayer in the name of our Savior, your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Moving right on to Agenda Item Number Three of Richard Hill Dexter County Judge Benjamin Trenier County Auditor. Okay, three A at nine a.m. to have a budget hearing. The non-budget hearing is open for three comments. Okay, Eva Martinez. Oh.
Good morning, honorable Commissioners and County Judge. I respectfully come before you and request a part-time employee. I have six full-time employees, myself makes seven, and I have a folder. In the past several years, the work has increased. And you're wondering, well, during COVID, it should slow down, but in ours, it did not. In our office, the title committees continued to work. The attorneys were able to work out of their homes. So if they were in the evening taking care of a client, they could submit their paperwork through e-filing. So our office continued to work 24/7, serving the public in its best way that they could. We have a lot of deadlines that we have to meet. And one of the things that y'all created that is wonderful and I need to compliment you on it is the grants. Because the grants help this county with money that is much needed when you have a situation that has been thrust upon you, but no money comes with it, but you still have to do it. One of the responsibilities of our office is to be sure that we are 90% compliant in both criminal, probate, and civil in order for you to have these grants. So it's very important that my people stay on task and do their job. So I respectfully ask for a part-time employee, 24 hours, no package to go with it, no insurance or anything, just a part-time employee. Thank you very much for your time, and I wish y'all each a good day.
Thank you. We can make comments on this.
Okay.
Yes. This is the bottom of the hearing. Is what this is, this is for? Anybody have anything they'd like to add or say? Because this is, this is on the agenda. Okay, we're moving next to Ruby Manning.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm speaking to, as a member of the county, the Elections Commission. For the last four years, or in January, maybe four years, Ola Guerrero has been our Elections Superintendent. During that time, she's never been compensated for any traditional work of the record 3% raises that you give annually or whatever that percentage is. I know this is late to me, and I don't really expect you to take action. I just want to go on record that it needs to be corrected, and we will come forward in the proper way in the next budget cycle. Thank you.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Okay, then we're moving to the next one on the list, which would be Karen Mark.
First of all, I apologize for sending in my request late, but I have an employee that wants to go full-time and with benefits. And I don't expect it to happen in this budget here, but I will ask for it in next budget year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have comments or questions? Okay, and the next one on the list is Dawn Burnett.
I wanted to provide to you that I've come up, but I completed. I was just informed this morning that we only have three minutes, so I'm going to have to cut my request pretty short. If you read through my presentation that I've provided to you, I have two things that I'm asking for. I'm asking for salary increases for my employees and an increase in my overtime budget. The salary increases. I'm not sure if each of you know this, but a large percentage of my budget is paid by the taxing entities. While Wilson County is a taxing entity, most of my budget is paid for by the taxing entities that I collect for, which because my software was paid off this year, there's going to be a tremendous decrease in my budget because of that. I was also cut in a couple of other places that I had asked not to be. So I'm asking that I be able to utilize this money from these taxing entities to increase my salaries in my office. It's not going to be, it will affect y'all in a small way. You can look through the Excel spreadsheet on the back that reflects what I charge the entities. So that is the reason I'm asking for this request. As Eva stated, you know, my office has not slowed down because of everything. I feel that I should be able to pay my employees a decent salary. That way, it allows me to keep them. If y'all have any questions pertaining to what I've provided you, please ask me, and I ask that you take the time to look over it. The other thing that I'm asking for is an increase in my overtime budget. Before I came into office, there were part-timers hired every year to process the mail for tax season. Since I've come into office, we've done away with hiring part-timers. We've allowed my employees to come in on their day off and process mail, tax payments, return mail. The amount that I have right now has helped. However, I run out about halfway through tax season, so that is why I'm asking for an increase in my overtime budget. Like I said, I, you know, ask that each of you look through the paperwork that I've provided to you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And thank y'all for taking the time to listen to me.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Dawn, you're saying that overtime is strictly for tax season?
Yes, the overtime is strictly for tax season. I did.
When we used to have part-time people jobs?
Right. The, the budget for a part-time used to be a pretty large budget in the tax office budget. And I've done away with that. It just leaves room for error when you hire outside people to come in for a temporary job. I feel better, and you should feel better, that our employees that are trained to do this are the ones that, you know, take their time to come in on their days off to process this. And when I mean mail, I'm talking tax payments and all the returned mail. In, in return, you know, this helps me get our collection money out to our taxing entities, and it helps us notify the taxpayers. The process is a lot better when we're able to get returned mail scanned into the system, and then we can mail out correct the tax statements to them. And it is a long process, and it does take a long time to do that.
I, I have a question.
Okay.
Okay, the tax statements, isn't that when they brought all the extra people in? Is to prepare the tax statements and mail them?
They used to do that, and then they used to hire additional people to come in and, and process all the mail.
Okay, who's doing, are we sourcing out the tax statements?
The tax statements, yes, are mailed out by an outside company.
Okay. But. That was when they would be back in the back of the tax office and have a whole room back there. Everybody be stuffing envelopes.
Yes.
And that was a.
Right. But now our employees are the ones processing the, the payments.
But they're, but that is outsourced.
That is outsourced, but all the returned.
Were all the people we're coming in was outsourced?
No, not all the people, no.
Okay.
That's, I think that's where the misconception is, is there, there were people hired to send out the tax statements to stuff the envelopes, but then there were people hired to process the mail, the payments. And that's, that's the difference.
I wasn't aware of that, or I was aware of a court where there were people, because I remember seeing back in that office back there, not the office, but in the back.
Yes.
All those people.
Those, those people were only hired for like a short period of time to stuff those envelopes and, and send out the tax statements. The other people would be part-time, temporary people that would process payments and stuff during tax season.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions? Okay, is there anybody else?
Judge, do you mind if I say something? Good morning, everybody. I know that this year, with COVID and everything, that the budget is very tight. But in the future, I really would like for y'all to keep my office staff in mind for raises, especially Sandra, because she's been here over 10 years. As you can see, extension agents will come and go. But if we don't have a solid office staff, we're not, the office is not going to keep running, especially as it has been. Sandra, since Brian's left, she has really stepped up and put out the programs that he normally does. She's been helping me a lot with the Feral Hog program, reaching out to people, getting any information that I can't get. So with that said, please keep her in mind if y'all do any salary increases. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to comment during the closing hearing? If anybody here want to make any comments, I'm going to say I'm okay, then we are. Moving along to Agenda Item Three B, vote on setting the salary expenses and other allowances of elected county or precinct officer. Local Government Code 152-013.
Judge, I'm just passing out what was posted on our website or your review.
Do I get a chance to review it? This is something we have to take action on. I make a motion, we approve it as presented. Motion by Commissioner Lying.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hyatt. We approve the salaries, expenses of elected officials and precinct officers. Do you have any comments? Questions? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm pulling a vote.
They've got two votes. Okay, now we're going to Agenda Item Three C, vote to ratify property tax increase. Local Government Code 111.008-C.
Commissioners and Judge, the Wilson County property tax rate in fiscal year 2020 was .4851 cents for every $100 in taxable value. It's my responsibility to ensure that the taxpayers' dollars are accurately accounted for and budgeted in an honest and ethical manner. This year, I was able to prepare a proposed budget by not increasing the tax rate for fiscal year 2021. I'm proposing to keep the tax rate the same at .4851 for every $100 in taxable value. The voter approval rate, which is the highest tax rate that Wilson County could adopt without holding an election, is .5007 for every $100 in taxable value, and I don't see the need to increase our property tax rate to that amount. I'm asking the court to vote on ratifying the tax rate in the proposed budget provided to you on July 31st.
Could you repeat the tax rate, .8451?
.4851.
That was last year's correct.
And this year's correct. I'm going to go ahead and hand out the proposed budget, which has the tax rate on the, the paper sheet as well.
Okay, again, this is to ratify the property tax increase, which the tax rate is, we're going to set a hearing for that.
Correct.
Okay, and the property tax increase is $581,5896, which includes new property and other things also added to this.
As far as the, the tax rate you're proposing for this year is the same rate as we're existing now, we would prefer.
That is correct.
Will I make the motion? To accept this proposed rate?
Is the tax, the property, property tax increase?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hyatt, second by Commissioner Lying. Do we have any comments or questions?
Would that, by the way, you're accepting the budget for that?
No. We're asking to ratify the tax rate if the next line item would be the budget.
The property tax increase.
Can I ask a question, Judge?
Yes.
Is this proposed budget the same as what is posted online?
It is.
So the, the changes that you've made to my budget don't reflect in there?
Which changes are you referring to?
The, the reduced budget for mine because of the software?
Yes, everything is, is updated in this.
Okay, but it's not updated online?
I'm not sure if it's been updated in or not.
The one, the one that's online is the one from July 31st.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. No comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Lying?
Aye.
Okay. Two opposed. Okay, now we're going to Agenda Item Three B, adopt budget for year 2020, 2021. Local Government Code 111.008.
So I've handed out the proposed budget, last year's budget increased by 8.25% in increases from the previous year. And this year, I'm pleased to inform you that significantly lower, with only a 3.5, 3.56% increase in expenses and general expenses overall from the 2020 fiscal year budget. So I presented it to you for review.
This is, everybody's had this reviewed for quite a while.
Judge, before we make the motion on that, I want to say something about the, about the budget. From last year, when we were proposed, we proposed that budget to increase to $1,319,882, which was an 8.2% increase, which taxes were raised one cent. And then you, the judge, said by going 7.99%, it would not go into a rollback. And then if that wasn't enough, the one cent that we increased brought in another $270,000. All these increases and road and bridges didn't benefit nothing and said that it would be the only time we were able to do this increase in the budget. So now this year, you're proposing a 3% increase again in salaries. We would add up to 266,181. And last year's salary also increases close to 290,000. My point is that yes, every employee is a hard-working employee for the county. But at this time, with the pandemic going on and some taxpayers are without work and hurting financially, in my opinion, this is not the time to give raises. We have to understand that this is the taxpayers' money, and I'm not in favor of going, giving raises at this time. Last year, I, this year, I am only giving $17,000 increase in my budget, which is not enough to maintain the roads. Every year, we're falling behind on maintaining the roads, and especially in subdivision. So every year, we have increased our employees' and salaries. And for road and bridges, we only get a small amount on the budget. And this is why we have to explain to the taxpayers that there is not enough money in the budget to fix the roads. How the money is split up in the county budget, how the money is split on the county budget. There are not to have this when I explain to the taxpayers on how the money is split out. So the years you've been a judge, you have never come up with a future master plan for the county. Therefore, I'm saying that every year that we need to have more workshops in the future so we can discuss issues that are concerning in the county's future. That's all. Thank you.
Amen. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
If you recommend taking something out of the budget?
What's that?
I'd like to pull out that we're giving the ESDs one, two, and three. That is saving over $160,000.
Okay, that is something we have to vote on. It's just, it's there?
Well, except for this budget, I mean, we're going to give them money, right?
Well, that's included in the budget. Okay, can I talk? There's something we vote on at the time. Okay, we're still going to be giving ESDs, I don't know, the ESDs, volunteers, associations, things like that. Okay, that, and I have discussed this with our auditor, okay? When we don't, if we don't, okay, because I know at one time, we were going to stop giving the ESDs money and changed our minds at the last minute. Indeed. In case we did again, that money will be there. If we don't, that money will be changed over to the contingency line item. But we have it in there for all ESDs, all volunteer fire departments and ambulance services right now. Except those that we're talking about, I hadn't planned on, you know, that's going to have to go through Commissioners Court, and I haven't planned on recommending, but just in case, because I do know one time that we had thought about taking it out, and that didn't go. So it's there just in case.
I would be, again, I know that's something to do with later. I would be in favor of diverting some of the funds to the volunteer fire departments that we have in the county. The two new ESDs that we have are going to need support for a time because they're not going to receive funds to operate until next year. But I think that as these ESDs, as, as a whole group mature, then I think we need. then I think we need to eventually back out of support for them. And their taxing entities, they're raising significant capital on their own. But the few remaining fire departments that we have, I think there's three, is that right?
There will be three as of right now, though there's four, because one of them, which that area voted to go because of ESD five, and they haven't got any tax dollars.
That's what I'm saying, is that, is the three that we have that will remain long term, at this point, long term, not a part of an ESD. We need to look at funding them a little more in the future until perhaps that part becomes an ESD. Again, the two new ESDs are going to need support, and I think we need to take a look at diverting some of the funds away from the ones that are more mature.
It's been, I don't know how many years since they really brought up that ESD and picked it up already, so financially, I think they're doing good shape, but their taxing entities are ready, so that's why we gave them a lot of years so they can catch up.
Yes, well, this is if we, if we discontinue it this year, which is probably going to happen for some of them, the ones that, like you said, are established and have been here for a while, then next year, we won't put it in the budget. It's in the budget this year in case, and then by then, we can do what Commissioner Wylie says, divert some of the two, the other.
We may need to provide some funds potentially to the ESDs for mutual aid. Until we have ESDs everywhere, and they're called to support areas because the volunteer fire departments are not as well-equipped and not as well-manned as they were even when I became a commissioner, because that's all changing. And so there's going to be a need for the ESDs to go in and do some support. So I could see some funds, but that doesn't mean the same rate they have now.
I think we need to meet with the ESDs and the volunteers, see what their annual budget is now based on the revenue they're raising, so we can have an idea of what they need. Or we have a duty to protect our communities, our EMS and police. I think we do. And I would, I would not want to make a decision without all the facts.
And if we remove, if we remove the amount from the budget, it will not be there because as it, as it's set up now, those are in their own department, so all of the line items fall within the same department. So if the court decided at a later, later time to increase, another one of the volunteer, it's as simple as a line transfer versus coming to the court and requesting an emergency budget transfer, which there would have to be solid reason to consider it an emergency.
Again, I think it's only, I think it's important for us to understand what their needs are.
Sure, absolutely.
And if we can cut from one ESD to survive the volunteer, based on their, on their revenue, that would be the wise thing to do, I think. But I think it'd be better to make the conversation if we have this conversation.
We can have a meeting sometime during the, probably not due this future, after, after the budget.
They're working together, so they don't know whether we're going to give them anything or not. We can't wait for it all.
The ones I have spoke with, I said, do not count on ours. I know one of them had it there, they weren't, they didn't have it designated for anything. You know, I don't know how they would do their budget, but...
Well, they're in the same position we are now, that's why it's a good idea to visit with all of them. So we can, we can have a conversation about what, what needs and demands or whatever that they may have.
But when you look at the information that the tax assessors collect related, you can see that all ESDs are not necessarily created equal from the standpoint of income. So we need to make an educated determination, but I don't think that, I think it is something that we're going to have to lean them out of and make certain that we're covered. But tax dollars for the county are going to become tighter and tighter. I have to take a look at that.
Do you have any questions, or any quick comments, or anything else? This is another action item. This is about the budget. Motion by Commissioner Wylie, second by Commissioner Hyatt. About the budget, is there any more comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Hold me.
Commissioner Wylie, excuse me, Commissioner Follin, Commissioner Wylie. Okay, the budget passed. Now we're going to Agenda Item 3E, set the tax rate hearing date. Have we got the date down somewhere?
Um, yes, Judge, I'm sorry. Right now, we would have to publicize it in the Wilson County News this Friday, well, submit it to the Wilson County News this Friday, to be on the website on September 2nd, with the tax rate hearing scheduled for September 14th.
Okay, which is for me.
We're going to do that because of the government.
We want to support that day. Well, September 2nd is not a fourth day. I thought you said the 14th.
No, the 14th, the 2nd is the, the date of the notice, the public notice.
Okay. So that can be done during Commissioner's court?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Can I give a motion to set the tax rate hearing for September 14th during Commissioner's court? Motion by Commissioner Hyatt, second by Commissioner Follin to file. Is there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have this set for, this is set 14th? 10:00 AM? Excuse me, is that it?
That's fine.
Okay, now we're going to, next to Agenda Item 4, public comments. These are just public comments, huh? Okay, now we're going to Agenda Item number five, certificates of completion and awards. And we have several here. Okay. I'm going to start with this one, I'm going to read just the totals on the ones from the tax office. And these are the property motor vehicle courses that the girls take during the year.
These are the required courses that all my employees had to complete by August 31st in order to log into the DMV system to process transactions.
Okay. Don Ploschek Burnett completed 50 DMV courses. Ruby Camarillo completed 51 DMV courses. Rosa Linda Soto completed 51 DMV courses. Patricia Zamora completed 48 DMV courses. Kristen Richardson completed 47 DMV courses. Helen Guerra completed 41 DMV courses. Elizabeth Fox completed 35 DMV courses. David Cohen completed 40 DMV courses. Wendy Proquell completed 41 DMV courses. Jennifer Ray completed 45 DMV courses. And she was up here. Okay, certificate of attendance, this certifies that. Ogo Marrero, Rose Lavas, Rose Kruisky, and Rosa Linda Sanchez successfully completed 17 hours of professional education development by attending the 38th Annual Election Law Seminar for County Election Officials conducted by Texas Secretary of State, July 22nd through 23rd, and July 27th through 29th, 2020, in Austin. And this certificate of completion, this certifies that Rose Lavas, Ogo Marrero, Rosa Linda Sanchez successfully completed security awareness training for the Texas Secretary of State, August 19th, 2021, credit, one hour credit security awareness. Any more? Thank you. Moving right along to Agenda Item number six, Richard O. Jackson County, judge, discussing take action on rentals of the Wilson County Expo and Communities Banker Hall and Barn. Okay, we have made a decision not to rent it out until, the Banker Hall, until August 31st, and if, this is the last Commissioner's court meeting before that date, and I was thinking possibly opening up to a rental if they wanted to have a meeting party or whatever, 100 people or less, and open the barn in, uh...
Jan, you know how many requests this team's gotten, you know, being...
What's the occupancy, maximum occupancy? Everyone's not here, and I do not have it.
There were about 250, as long as they kept their distance.
Mass occupancy, was it 600 or not?
Is it 600? I thought it went in half of that.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, four.
Yeah. I was going to suggest opening up to small parties or small groups, because there is enough room for 100 people to be in there in social distance.
And who's going to oversee that, of the social distance?
The same people that oversee all the other social distancing programs. Wherever you go, when it's at school, whenever, whoever oversees it, there's, it's, it's, social distancing, I didn't, about is kind of a, a personal deal. You've got to...
Okay, masks, orange too?
What's that?
The mask, the mask.
Yeah, the mask is a, an executive order from the governor.
Well, I know they had a function out here at the city, they didn't have it on, you know?
Well, better call them, though.
You know?
Tell them they didn't have their mask on.
And, and are we going to require officers out there going to, if they have beer? Because that's going to be one of the feedback. You know, who's going to enforce that, my biggest concern?
The same, I said, the same people that enforce it everywhere. There's not, there's not any law enforcement dedicated to masks. I haven't found it yet. We couldn't vote to leave it and not allow anything, or, I said, I was going to start, open it up. Their schools are having functions, they're practicing football, there, there's all kinds of softball tournaments all around, soccer tournaments, starting to happen.
That falls on a youth sports activity that we're dealing with.
Okay.
Do you believe other, other...
Well, I'm just using that as an example, that people are starting to do things.
I mean, my only concern is who's going to, who's going to be there to place it? Who's going to make sure, there's only 100 people in there, you know, are you going to open it up to weddings or...
Okay, it's, it's going to be the same thing. We don't have somebody out there when we rent it out to be sure that they're going by everything. You know, we rent it out, and it's their, their responsibility.
It, it would seem to me that if we were going to rent it out, that we would need, and if we're going to put a number, 100 people there, whatever, you're going to need some sort of supervision to make certain that there's not 150 people there. It's, it's a difficult thing. I, I just took my wife out for our anniversary week before last, for the first time to go out to dinner since March the 1st, let's say, and we, we went to a really nice restaurant. You had to wear a mask to get in. All of the people that were there wore, that were serving wore a mask, but once you got to your table, obviously, you can't put the mask on, and there were tables that had 12 people around. Uh, they were distant, you know, everything was distant, but I don't know. But this thing's not over yet, I do know that.
No, it's not.
We've been fortunate, and when you look at the, you know, I look at the daily information we get, daily, obviously. And we're one of the better bearing counties within, within our region, eh? But we still have, we still have some issues.
Other, their issues are going to be here until there is a vaccine or something to prevent this.
It may be, it may be another year or so. And I hope not, but we don't know the answer.
Well, since, can I also, we could, in the, in the contract agreement to rent it, just put in there a stipulation that masks required upon entry. After that, you know, if it's a wedding, and it's family or friends, whatever, then it'll be up to them to social distance, but I think just to protect us, we should say, if you're going to rent this all, you'll have to have a mask in there. It's like they do in a restaurant, and then when they get and sit at the table, they take their mask off. Just give the people some guideline about, you know, we're concerned about it, but we're not enforcing it anywhere else. This is going to be a private rental of a county property, so we...
But the thing about the restaurant is that owner is, he's the one mandating it, the owner of that restaurant. We're the owner of the expo hall.
Right.
So we need to be, because people are being rented.
But, but the difference is, is that as the owner of the restaurant, I've followed the governor's mandate, maybe taken a couple of further steps, but all the people that are working there report to me. And so if you've got somebody that, you know, if you get up from your table, you've got to put a mask on to go to the men's room or to the ladies' room. And I think...
You've been renting, and they ain't going to force it?
No, no, but I, I think if we work on the rent, and I'm not sure we should, that we could do very much like Commissioner Hyatt suggested, and have some guidelines. You know, you wear the mask until you get inside. We recommend that, you know, not necessarily at your table, but if you're up and about, that you put your mask on. But I don't know what they would have done, I didn't see anybody get up and walk through without a mask. I don't know what they'd have done, if someone would have, they would probably just put a mask on.
We have just a few bookings in the, both in the inside hall and the back one.
We have a few, some interest?
Yes, yes.
Did she say what kind of numbers, I mean, they're talking about...
Well, they have to abide by whatever we write, as we said.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know what's going on with that one.
Are they talking about the front one, the Banker Hall, how many, you know, how many people they're going to have?
Because I know they're, I mean, the general offering rate.
That's another thing, I mean, if we, if we start doing it, the offering's going to want to go in.
Well, if we do, okay, say 50% of capacity, we'll probably do 200, around 250 people.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, the reason that I just mentioned the, the number 100 was for groups of, there's some meetings that have more than 20 people, and they don't have enough room or other places to, to have a meeting, they could have a meeting there. Not necessarily, you know, there's not many weddings are going to, going to limit the people to 100 people.
I think 100 to 150, if we're going to do it, would be the number that we should do that, or two-four. It's, it's, it's a difficult thing, because it's, it's, it's just a matter of, you know, whether these start and whether that causes the virus to spread a little more quickly within our county.
I know we have van and goat calving, they should...
Well, that's different, that's in the back one, and that's, that's not... I mean, I know, so, open the back one up for that, but it's fixing to be the, the end of that time of year.
One other question I got, who's going to be going in sanitizing after every event or beforehand? Is it going to be on our people?
Well, we can put it on whoever is using the facility. Keep that out. Uh, and I'm not sure how to sanitize the back door, to be honest with you.
No, 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 I'm talking about the Banker Hall in front.
The Banker Hall, uh, that could be... Banquet hall, uh, that could be for the cleanup. Cause we have to clean up. So, uh, they can take their.
It also says banquet hall. It says banquet hall and barn on the agenda item.
Well, we would have the duty to sanitize the hall. I mean, we could require they do it, but with us not being there, making sure they did it properly.
Well, that's no value. Your own followers.
I have a question. Um, Sarah Kennedy, J P two, Wilson County. Just as a, as an observer in our community, I've had many people approach me and ask, when are we gonna open the show bar? When are we going, when is the expo gonna be available? The county commissioners voted to, that to become a county event place. And as you all mentioned, many venues are beginning to open. And as they open, as Commissioner Wiley said, the private entities, they are held accountable for their particular things. As a community, we have a little bit of a different structure. And perhaps, uh, Catherine Chapman or whoever is on our legal team could come up with a contract that must be signed. And then that would give the owner, uh, put the onus on the renter of the facility to be responsible for everyone who comes and goes during the time that they are there. And that would perhaps maybe be written such that if they don't, then the county will not be held liable for those people. I think that as citizens of the United States and Texas specifically, we should be trusting, we should trust the people in our community, that what makes people good citizens is what makes people good citizens, what makes good communities. And I believe we have an excellent, excellent community. I think that we have people in our community who know and understand, they're intelligent, and they're willing to do what's asked of them, to be done of them. But I think it's a travesty and it is unjust to restrict these community members from meeting and gathering and being responsible when they can be. I think it is unjust for us as a government to say, no, you can't meet here. Yes, it's a facility. Yes, your tax dollars go to support it. Yes, your tax dollars go to clean it and to help manage it and all of those things. And yet we're saying, you can't use it because we're coming from a base of fear. Do we wanna come from a base of fear?
We were faced like the state and the federal government was with an unknown. We didn't know anything about the virus, how it created, how to prevent it. So as a precaution for the safety of the citizens, we chose to close the hall.
Exactly.
Now that we're learning more.
Exactly.
On, on prevention and, and we have some, some self-responsibility of the citizens to take care of themselves as well. That's why we're considering we're opening it. But we would need to have some restrictions that we would put in the contract. And we have a contract now to rent it. We could add some provisions to identify this. And then, and then it's self-responsibility.
Exactly. That's what I'm talking about. And that's exciting. And I think.
They, the person putting on the wedding or the event would be informed that it's gonna be up to you to inform, uh, to enforce that.
And I believe that they will be.
And I, and if they do or don't, that, that's where the self-responsibility comes in. But I just wanna protect the county by having a provision in there on the contract saying, this is on you now. We're gonna rent it to you. This is what we require or recommend. Now you take care.
Do we want to go to like fifty percent capacity?
I'm sorry?
Do we want to go like to fifty percent capacity?
Well, whatever we make, yeah, the recommendation for it, yeah.
Yep. And.
What's the governor saying on that?
It's still fifty percent capacity, uh, in masks. Social distancing, all this other good stuff. But I think we follow that recommendation that we open the banquet hall up after August thirty-first at fifty percent capacity and open the, the barn up, just open it up. Cause there's. There's gonna be validations and other things preparing.
I backed the motion that we opened it up, provided we had some provisions about, uh, some regulations that we would want, or requirements we would have with people renting.
Fifty percent capacity?
Y'all agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah, Kathy, I would agree with that.
With, with provisions for COVID protection. We've, we got to, the thirty-first, if we.
How quick can you get a contract, you know, kind of written up? Will you have these changes? You know, will they have to wear a mask?
Well, oh, well, I would just take the one we have, probably in that paragraph.
I got a motion by Commissioner Hyatt. Second by Commissioner Follin. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
And the fee's gonna be the same, right?
Fees are gonna be the same. We're not changing the fees.
And I say one, one, um, more thing. And I think, you know, the governors, we may say also, as the governor makes various proclamations, that we will be following where his proclamations are. As we know, some of the big cities are kind of thumbing their nose at it. So I think that would, uh, that would be important to put something like that in there.
And we'll follow the governor's recommendations.
Well, that's why we have you.
Okay, so we are going to start with limited capacity, open the, the banquet hall up and the barn.
Who needs a vote on that?
Yeah.
Did I say something?
Yes, sir.
I attended, I attended a couple of functions here at Benefits last Sat-, uh, on Sundays afternoons. I made here two, three here recently. Uh, there's people, we talked about masks. They're not wearing it. It's, I've made one function that people were wearing. The other function, people weren't wearing. Even the police officer was sitting right there. He didn't wear one. So if you're gonna make rules, we're gonna need some enforcement on it too.
Okay, now if we have to do the enforcement, that's, that's law enforcement.
That's what I mean.
Well, but I think the governor allows.
We're gonna need help from the law enforcement. You're gonna need help from the law enforcement.
But here, here, here's the deal. I'm saying, okay, this is statewide. This is not just the expo center, okay? You see people, you know, social distancing and not social distancing and not having masks on, and there's nothing happening. Uh, are we gonna single out one building in Wilson County and that's the only place that's gonna get sanctioned for not having a mask on? Has anybody ever heard of anybody getting a citation for not having a mask on?
Well.
Well, they shut them down in Bear County.
If you go to a restaurant in South Hill, don't take.
Cause I have heard not having another one person.
They shut it down in the T A. Well, Beaver took their license because they weren't social distancing and not wearing masks.
That was a T A B C?
Yes.
Well, that's because they serve more alcohol than food.
Exactly. But we, if they're, if somebody rents this and, and has a wedding that has alcohol.
They have to have officers in.
Right. But like he's saying, are the officers gonna be enforced?
Or they enforce it. Or we're gonna have enforcement.
And I'm just saying, it hasn't been enforced anywhere yet. I have, like I said.
No, not in this county.
Why we got fifty thousand people in Wilson County and haven't been a ticket written yet for.
And that's where the self-responsibility of personal force comes in. If you have a kind of them.
And the host.
Yeah.
The host.
And you're not comfortable with people not wearing masks. You could make all different actual rules, but you need enforcement.
But you can't enforce a law that's not a law.
Well, at least you could tell. Officer would come in and say, hey, sir, put your mask on and do this or that.
I don't know. What's that town where the sheriff is finding people for wearing masks?
Like I said, I attended one function, one benefit, officer just sat there with the people who were crowded under a tent, no mask up there. So you take it as an instant.
Please, I'm sorry.
For this officer, for this county.
We need some sort of caveat that if COVID starts to increase in the county, that if you booked something for November the fifteenth, I'm pulling that bit out of the Saturday air, um, that it's, you know, we're, we're booking, but it is subject to change. Well, then, so by November fifteenth, this will be cured. Hope you don't fall off that limb. I don't think it's real sturdy.
But I hope you're right.
It may have a miracle cure about the third.
November one, November one.
Okay, so we've got, and I thought we voted on that.
We just got the first and the second.
Got first and the second, then, okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will have the show bar opened up with restrictions.
Christina has to come for it.
Yes.
And I said show bar is the banquet, expo and banquet communities. Okay, Agenda Item Number Seven, Richfield, Jackson County Judge, Old Marrow, Elections Administrator, Discuss and Take Action on the Agreement the Twenty Twenty Primary Elections Holy Locations. It's gonna be a little odd, isn't it?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Now we have two new locations, which is box one oh one and four sixteen.
One oh one, four sixteen. Okay, that four sixteen, is that that little building right as you walked? Is it big enough?
It is.
It is? Okay.
It's probably a little well-buried, probably something like that.
Okay, and where is that?
It's a title building.
It always looks little, but maybe.
It, it does. But we actually went in there and they actually have a, um, testing area.
Okay. So, would the church let us use our parking?
Yes, they will.
They will? Okay.
The fireworks, is it handicapped or something?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
You get a free ballpark with every book.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Gomez, second by Commissioner Hyatt to accept the voting, holding locations for the primary elections or general election. This is primary.
It does say primary.
It does, but it's the general election.
Right. In the second, um, it's just information is five, uh, dollars out of the, um, figure nine.
So you're saying although.
We should say.
It should say general. Okay, we have the movement in the second to accept the locations. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we got that. Moving right along. Oh boy.